It is five thirty and I will call this special city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda would be, I'm going to open this up to a public hearing. See if anyone's here to speak in favor or against the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. Is there anybody here that wants to speak for or against the proposed budget? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and consider approval of...
Mr. Mayor Prokoun, members of council, before you vote on the motion, I wanted to kind of go back over some of the bigger things from our budget hearings and back into our talks early in the summer. Of course, the biggest conversation that we had was related to salaries, most significantly in our Public Safety Department. And so just kind of wanted to discuss what that breakdown of the proposed pay plans and the overall amounts increased in expenditure for next year. So what is proposed in the budget before you across all city employee salaries is one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four. Of that, one million, eighty-two thousand and eighty-six dollars is in the general fund, which relates to property tax and sales tax revenue. Of that number, the one million, eighty-two, one million, seventy-seven thousand, eight sixty-six is for public safety. Five hundred and eighty-two thousand in the fire department, four hundred and ninety-five thousand in the police department. If you look, that's only a four thousand dollar difference. Obviously, there's a lot more employees in the general fund. The total piece in non-public safety in the general fund was just one hundred and eighty-two thousand. But we showed a reduction, if you'll remember, in the Splashville operational costs, and that came after that, and so that was about one hundred and seventy-seven thousand that then came back out after that, so that's why it only shows that difference. So those are the proposed salary increases for next year in large amounts. We've also proposed adding three positions on the utility side of the city, two customer service folks, because of the demand placed on that side of Nick's operation with number of meters and connections and turnoffs and turn-ons. They need the help over there. So we propose those two positions and then a utility billing manager in Ms. Harris's department to keep up, again, along the lines of a same growth as we add more connections across the city. That's placing an increased demand for services on the utility billing side as well. Those are kind of the big highlights. Of course, there were fleet replacement across all the different departments in the city and things like that. And I'll take any questions any of you may have on the budget.
Any questions for Mr. King? Now entertain approval of ordinance for annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Mr. Mayor Prokoun, I would make the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five oh dash twenty-six, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual operating budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nix and second by Mr. Coe. Any other discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This will be a roll call vote. Place one?
Yay.
Place two?
Yay.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yay.
Place five?
Yes.
Place seven?
Yes.
Place eight?
Yes.
That will pass unanimously. Thank you very much. And just want to make one comment to all the public safety people in the audience. Thank y'all for speaking to every one of us and having those open conversations with us, and just thank you for all y'all do. All right, next item on the agenda, we're going to consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual operating budget. Mr. King?
Mr. Mayor Prokoun, members of council, the budget that you just voted on was built on the proposed voter approval rate for this upcoming year. The current tax rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five year was point three-eight-two-nine. The budget was built on the voter approval rate, which would be point four-zero-zero-zero. So an increase from point three-eight-two-nine. That is projected to increase the property tax revenues five hundred and seventy-three thousand. And so if you'll remember from what we just talked about with the salary increases, just the public safety side of it, that's about a little over, you know, fifty-one, fifty-two percent of that. And so we were able to figure out how to do that, the rest of the increases with budget adjustments and how we took some of the requests from the different departments. But in order to meet what had been proposed on the salary increases, we did propose the voter approval rate to you, again, which takes it from point three-eight-two-nine to point four-zero-zero-zero.
Any questions for Mr. King? Hearing none, I will consider a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual operating budget.
I make the motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual operation budget.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Nix. This could also be a roll call vote. Place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five?
Yes.
Place seven?
Yes.
Place eight?
Yes.
That will also pass by unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider adoption ordinance setting fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Mr. King?
Mr. Mayor Prokoun, members of the council, each year as part of the budget process, you adopt an ordinance that reflects all the fees that the city charges for various different things. Everything from building permits, park rental fees, water taps, water bills, what the water rates are going to be. Probably the two most notable increases in the fee schedule will be in the utility billing side of it. And again, following the rate model that had been adopted with some adjustments to account for the projects that need to be done, both on the water side of the house and the wastewater side of the house. A ten percent increase in the water rate and a twelve percent increase in the wastewater rate. Ms. Harris, any other you think I should bring attention to? Okay. And I'll wait for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. King?
This is a comprehensive list of all the fees, to the best of our knowledge, that we can compile, that the city charges for the various services, commodities, et cetera.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, I mean, it's a very comprehensive list, registration for use boards, every way you transact business with city government is codified in this fee schedule.
Okay. Any requests for Mr. King? Hearing none, I will consider a motion for adoption of ordinance setting fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Mayor Prokoun, I move that we adopt the ordinance two zero two-five oh dash twenty-seven for setting fee schedule fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Greenholt, second by Mr. Reisman. Any other discussion? This will also be a roll call vote. Place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five?
Yes.
Place seven?
Yes.
Place eight?
Yes.
That will also pass by unanimous vote. Moving on to agenda item number five, I will open up a public hearing for twenty twenty-five tax rate. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against the proposed twenty twenty-five tax rate? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five tax rate. Mr. King?
I don't have anything further, sir.
Didn't think you would.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. King? Hearing none, I will consider a motion to adopt the ordinance setting tax rate for twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor Prokoun, I make the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh dash twenty-eight, adopting the tax rate for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to support the budget, the proposed budget.
Got a motion by Mr. Nix, a second by Mrs. Smith.
I need to add to that motion, Mr. Mayor Prokoun. Let me retract that and start over so I can do it correctly.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh dash twenty-eight, that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four-zero-zero-zero per one hundred, which effectively is a raise of point, of five point three-two percent over last year.
All right. A motion by Mr. Nix, a second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussions? This will also be a roll call vote. Place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five?
Yes.
Place seven?
Yes.
Place eight?
Yes.
That will also pass by unanimous vote. We are going to pull item number seven and move to item number eight, consider adoption of a city of Stevensville official flag. Mr. King?
Mr. Mayor Prokoun, members of council, this item kind of came up a year or so ago after we had adopted the new logo and new branding for the city. So recently, I was reminded, hey, whatever happened to that discussion? Mr. Brown had had two different flags made up back then, and so we have those for you tonight, Mr. Brown, Ms. Wood. And so we can show them to you and ask if you would like to adopt either one of them. I'm going to say you might put it closer to the podium. There you go.
Come on, man.
You put on a pole and run back and forth.
Can you make it wave like it's in the thing?
And we have another one as well, is that correct?
If you're asking for input, I think it was a consensus of some of the staff that I polled, that they liked that one better.
I agree with that.
I agree. I think it shows up better on the Navy than it does on the White.
Is it double sided, Mr. Brown?
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Then I make the motion that we adopt the city of Stevensville flag in the Navy color.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Ms. Turpia, a second by Mr. Reisman. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You mean, we didn't need a roll call?
No roll call for the flag. All right, we're going to pull item number nine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Prokoun, members of council, just received late this afternoon, an updated agreement that was just passed by the Hood County Commissioners Court with the city of Granbury, and it has slightly different language in a couple of places than the one that we were going to propose tonight, since Chief Harris and his team have asked for a little more time to now go back and study those changes and work with the city of Granbury to make sure we're all passing the same agreement.
That being said, it is five forty-five, and I will adjourn the special city council meeting. It is now five forty-five, and I will call the Stevensville City Council Committee meetings to order. First on the item on the agenda would be nominations committee, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Basket, I'd like to make a motion that we table the nominations committee meeting for tonight due to, we're fixing to set boards again in November, so I'd just like to push it until we can have more applicants and open everything up for the November committee meeting.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Ms. Smith and a second by Mr. Nix to table this item until November committee meetings. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. All right, next on the item would be Parks and Leisure Services Committee, Mr. Reisman.
Thank you, Mayor Prokoun. I asked Darren to come up, and we have a discussion to talk about Splashville renovation.
Mayor and council, we wanted to take the opportunity tonight to talk a little bit. We've been talking about this, I think, for about a year now. We actually first made contact with Craftsman at TML last year, and I think Mr. Basket and I sat down and had a conversation with him about this project. So we've been going back and forth with them for a year, working on some different ideas for Splashville. So tonight, we just wanted to introduce the concept, kind of where we've landed right now. And so you have a packet in front of you, you have three different, actually, it's three different packets bound together, but two of them have pricing information. The first one is renderings. Those renderings of Splashville show kind of the approach we've taken to it, which is a little different than the typical approach a lot of cities are taking to renovations on these type of facilities. We wanted to look at a multi-generational approach that's going to attract more than just kids, it's going to attract adults, all the way up to our senior population and everybody in between. So it's got a little bit of stuff on there for everybody. Also within that packet is a secondary location of a, an additional splash pad feature that would be located at the Optimus JC Park. So it introduced both concepts. So you would have a splash pad within Splashville, but you would also have the opportunity to have a secondary splash pad location, which would be located at the Optimus JC Park, wherever we choose to locate it within that facility. The other things you're going to see in the Splashville renovation are looking at some interactive features for children, they can also be used for adults. They, we have some play type features. When we talked to Craftsman, we told them we really wanted to lean into things that are very active and promote kids to be active within that facility. So what you'll see, I'll go through it a little bit with you here on the first. If you look at the overhead view, you're looking at two different interactive features. There are these red and blue, or red, yellow, green and blue features. Those features have interactive screen features within them. So the one that looks like triangles, you can play soccer in it, and it has goals at the back of every one of the triangles. So you can put a four-person team up there, or a multi-person team in each triangle, and you can play hockey and shoot at it, you can play soccer and shoot at it, and you can play different versions of games within it. It's got a button, you can change, you can push the button and change what you're playing. The red and blue one is called the Sotu Wall. It's another interactive feature that you can kick a soccer ball at, and so different pieces of this acrylic screen will light up, and you can play like a two-person or a four-person game with it, and you're shooting at different areas of the screen as they light up to score. And we, we've actually asked them if we can see that one. It's actually, they have one on the ground in Fredericksburg. So those are the two interactive features that you see up on the top. You see the splash pad, then you see these two interactive features. Then you get to the turf that's going to now surround the area. That turf has two more interactive features to it. One is a very climbing and active play piece for kids. Once again, we told them to lean into this very active. We told them, we have playgrounds on the ground already that have slides and swings. We want something that feels a little different than that. And so this is the piece they, they suggested to us. And then you'll see another piece. So there, there's two pieces back to back in the packet. So one is going to be the ascend orbiter. It's kind of looks like a circle on top. It's a very much climbing and active piece for kids. And then you'll see another piece that looks like it's, it's an obstacle course, basically, and on the turf, it's going to have markings for it. So you can actually run through it, you can race people on it, you can race for time. But we wanted to go with a very active place, and we kind of wanted to do this where it felt more like a year-round, families can use it. Because I know y'all sitting up there, I know things I heard when I was up there, a lot of it is, you know, there's not enough for families and kids to do. We think this could be a, a good thing for families and kids to spend their evenings and have something to do, and it's free. I mean, we're not charging to get in the doors. It has pickleball for adults, so it gives some adult activity as well. I mean, kids are using pickleball courts now, too, all the way down to like five years old. We also have a snack bar there that we can bring back to life, and we can do some stuff with that. So we think there's just a lot we can do with the facility to attract a lot more people of a lot different ages and be open a lot more of the year than what we currently are. So, and tonight was really just about introducing the concept to y'all and kind of letting you know how we've gotten to the point we've gotten to.
I was going to say, let's, let's back up a second and tell a story to explain why we're even talking about maybe doing something with Splashville, certainly for the members of the public and any members of committee or council. We kind of started having these conversations several months ago. Currently, I think we're getting back to about a million dollars needed in maintenance pieces for the pool.
Yeah, renovations, the play features, ongoing maintenance issues.
You'll remember just two to three years ago, I guess just three years ago, we, we spent in two years, six hundred and fifty thousand in capital maintenance pieces at Splashville. And then at current staffing models, all of our operational costs, we run a full season from Memorial Day to Labor Day, which is almost impossible now. But for budgetary purposes, we still kind of calculate cost on that model. We're projected to lose over four hundred thousand dollars based on attendance records and entry costs are compared to what our operational costs were. And so in having those conversations with y'all, we talked about trying to come up with something different, a long-term solution, because we can't continue to operate the model like that. Cities across Texas are having the same conversations. I think the city of Dallas, the other day, made over a three-year period.
Over a three-year period, they'll shut down every single pool within the city of Dallas.
But we don't just want to close it, we want to come up with a different idea. And so in the, in the budget we just adopted, part of what was set aside was three million dollars was moved in from reserves into an account to start moving down this path. So Mr. Trust was correct, we just kind of wanted to start broaching that conversation tonight, start getting some feedback from you. We're going to want to go around, talk to all of our civic clubs in the community, start working that way, hold some town hall meetings, probably the legacy center would be appropriate, and start gaining some feedback before we ask you to vote on, on a final product. But we did want to start having that conversation now.
So Darren, you might want to talk about the splash pad. How many children are going to be able to be on the splash pad at one time?
So these splash pads are about eighteen hundred square feet, which holds about eighty kids at a time. What we're looking at right now is, of course, two of them on different sides of, of the community. So, I mean, the difference between a splash pad and a pool is, the splash pad is open. So when the park opens in the morning, you can go out there and start it. It, it's not something I have to go turn on. You push a button, it comes on, and we can have it programmed, or it only comes on between certain hours, but it gives you a lot more access throughout the day. So at any given time, you could see eighty kids there. I take my children to them in several different... I take my children to them in several different communities in East Texas we visit. You're never going to typically see 80 kids there at one time.
Right.
But it gives you the opportunity throughout the day to kind of, they can plan their day instead of us planning, we're open this many hours, this is when you have to come. It gives you more access.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the one, there won't be like a fencing around it, it's just going to be open? In mind, because, I mean, now, obviously, we have a fence.
So Splashville, we've showed keeping the fencing around.
Okay.
Because we didn't really see any need. And it does give us the ability to kind of control access to that facility. The other one, it doesn't show fencing in the rendering. If fencing is something we think needs to be there, I mean, that's why we're going to have conversations coming up. We think fencing needs to be a part of that. We can go back and have that conversation. It may need to be a part of that, because we do have a drive that goes around that park, and so to protect kids and keep them inside the boundaries of it, it may be something we need to look at.
Darren, on the interactive court, which is real new, people are using now, is that multi-use for adults, too?
Either one of those. I mean, those courts can be used, you can get out there and play with your kids on those courts or whatever. Yeah, anybody can use it.
Multi-use.
So, yeah, it'd be a multi-generational. It's also, the cool thing about it is, we've talked about that a lot with our park that we just finished, it's an inclusive piece, so it can be used by anybody of any ability. So it gives us some more inclusive features to our park.
Tell me your ideas about the pickleball courts and, you know, how we can...
So our pickleball courts, if you go down there at night right now, are extremely crowded, which is a great problem to have, but it's created a little bit of problem and a little bit of tension with the tennis groups that go out there at night, because pickleball's kind of taken those courts over. And we've heard for several years now that we need to add additional pickleball courts so that they have space to get off and do some stuff on their own. And that's why we kind of thought, what if we turn this into a pickleball area with a splash pad? Does that make sense? And so we started building the idea around that, and we drew some renderings up that we sent to Craftsman. But we just think with pickleball being as popular as it is, and it doesn't seem to show signs of slowing down, it's a good opportunity for us to put an amenity in that we know our community wants.
Darren, I'm sorry. I just want to ask one more question. So in looking at all this, would you, do you foresee having an equipment room area that you could rent things out of that?
So when you walk into Splashville right now, when you go on the right-hand side, there is an equipment, like there's a window right there that goes into our office. So we do think at some time, we will have, you know, when we find out what those peak hours are and what we've got going on, that we probably would have a staff member over there to check out pickleball equipment. Any other equipment that we come up with that is needed for this facility, whether it's, you know, we're going to throw cornhole boards out at night, or we're going to, we can keep all that stuff in there, and those people can check all that equipment out. But it's a much reduced staff from what you're going to see with a splash or with a pool.
Thank you.
Darren, on the pickleball courts, I noticed there's shade of them, which is great, but are there going to be, is there going to be a light feature underneath there?
So...
Could be used.
We're exploring options for that right now. So we've reached out to several different companies to come up with some ideas. They're reviewing the structural design of that to see how they can hang off of that. We have lights within the facility now, we actually have sports lighting up out there, but once you shade that, we're not going to get that light through there. So we're looking with several companies right now to come up with a different design approach to how we're going to get lights underneath that. And we've reached out to a couple of cities that have them to see what they, what companies they'd be used to get those in. So it will be lit.
Darren, what will this do to your staffing levels?
We wouldn't, I don't even think we would need additional staff for this, really. We have a sports staff, and the majority of our kids, they work for us, like college age or high school age, they're working with us for sports. They would probably take turns rotating through this as we need staff to be there in the evenings or whatever, when our, when our high use times are. We would staff somebody over there. As far as trash and bathrooms, it'd be added to our rotation with our park screws to make sure it stays clean, make sure trash gets removed, all that kind of stuff. Because we think this would be a high-use area.
What about staffing at the JC Park facilities?
There is no staffing required for a splash pad.
Okay.
So, and these systems are different. These aren't old-school. Jason and I have had conversations for several years now about splash pads, because you hear stuff about splash pads, and the older systems are chemical systems, and they have a chemical, you know, they have all the chemicals with them like your pool, and you heard about stuff happening with splash pads. These are pass-through systems. So they're actually on Nick's waters, they're on our water system. It's the same water you're taking a shower with. So they're reduced in size, and they're reduced in their gallon, their flow rates. So what's designed is shown as a pass-through system. So you can go there, push a button, start it. Any mom that shows up in the morning, dad, whoever, can push that button, the kids will push the button. They start it up, and it goes, and then 15 minutes later, it turns itself back off. So they'll know, the kids know automatically, they have to go back to the button, push it again, it comes right back on.
They learn pretty quick.
Oh, yeah.
So, sorry, can I make one more statement, or one more question? You mentioned the $400,000 deficit a year or whatever. Does that include all the salaries, all the everything? I just want to make that publicly known, what that includes.
It's all inclusive.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure that that was...
That doesn't include, what is not going to include in that for, like, any capital expenses that we have coming forward would not be included in that $400,000. That would be additional to that a year.
Yes.
So...
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Well, I love the idea of the JC Park one. I live on that side of town, there's tons of kids at that park all the time, year-round. I like that idea.
So, we have a golf tournament coming up, the money we raise in that golf tournament's going back towards JC Park, we're going to start doing renovations on that side. So this would just be another great amenity to JC Park, and we have lots of space over there to utilize.
Right, I agree. Good job.
Darren, one more question. The quotes that you've got on this, and I haven't had an opportunity to look at them, are they valid for a specified period of time?
I think probably with any of these companies, and with, probably 90 days or so, but...
Okay.
They're holding pretty tight on their prices right now, because we've been working on this for a while.
Okay.
They're going back and polishing prices after I met with them again today, so we're polishing some stuff up again, trying to firm up some prices on a few things and make sure we're where we need to be.
Prices are, they're probably not as volatile as they were at one time. It hadn't been that long ago, I quoted materials, and the price was good for that day.
Yeah, yeah.
And it used to be 30 days, but standard, but that's not the case anymore, that's why I ask about this.
The playground industry, these people seem to be holding pretty tight to their pricing. So, and this is top-of-the-line stuff. What you're getting in this splash pad here is Vortex. Vortex is the number one product when it comes to splash pads, that's the top-of-the-line stuff. It's actually what we have on our splash pad now. And so we're not, we're putting very nice stuff in this, and, you know, trying to design it in a way that is really what we think is a good fit for this community, will add very high-use amenity for the community.
And hopefully by buying better equipment, it'll be durable.
That Vortex equipment that's on the ground right now at Splashville's been there since the day it opened.
Okay.
So...
Thank you for your work on this.
And it's the one piece that hasn't needed continued...
It's not, it's held up really well, but it does have an expiration date on it at some point, so.
There you go.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
So conclude your committee. Mr. Greenall, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, it is 6:04, and I will adjourn us from the city council committee meetings. Thank y'all very much.